I guess the first item of business is, well, in order to, I guess, remind you of the signature file. But also, the next item of business is to go into non-public. And if someone could make a motion in accordance with RSA 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, a personnel.
So moved.
Okay, Zach moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ted seconds. Mary, any discussion? Seeing none, Mary on your vote?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
And Neil will be on momentarily. He's there now, so. Well, Bill, aye. So.
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Okay, we're at a non-public. Alright, so we're cooking that, right? Okay, so the next order of business is a discussion on a letter that we received from the Agent General in New Hampshire. It was General Michaelades from the New Hampshire National Guard. And this is regarding the, at least our belief that the National Guard Armory, once it's no longer used as an armory, would go back to the town of Plymouth. And this was actually described to us in annual reports that we get called an Agency Real Property Report. And it stipulated, or it has a listing of all the state-owned properties and, you know, the state's towns. And Plymouth included the Armory. And the the conditions read that when it no longer is used as an armory, it reverts to the town. And we tried to explain to Major General Michaelades that, you know, we anticipate when they leave and go to their new facility out on, you know, the Rotary, that the Armory would then be our property. And he took exception to that and wrote us a letter and indicated that that statement was not in the deed, so he made a correction in the, in the the Agency Real Property Report to not include that statement. So we decided that, I mean, it's definitely worth our pursuit to make sure that we can find the information that made that statement appear in the Real Property Report. And it could be something historic, because this was dating back to the 60s. And it may not have been language in the deed, but it is language nonetheless that appeared there. So we have a letter from our attorney to request, oh, a 91A request to find out when and where that statement appeared. So that, you know, we could reinstate that. And Kathy, want to make any further comment on that?
Can, can the board get a copy of the letter he sent back to us?
We haven't sent the letter yet, right? Now, we've got the, you've got a copy of Michaelades'. Michaelades', oh, you don't?
Not in my packet.
No.
Yeah, neither.
Okay. Alright, so there's some history that you probably would benefit from, from receiving.
So last, last meeting, we voted to have you write a letter to him.
Yep.
And then, so, we have at least that much context, but we, I, I just haven't seen what his response said.
Okay, well, yeah, it's, okay, fine, then we'll get you that letter. I could read it to you, actually, read that part. Oh, you know, basically, he observed that the fact that the deed only said that if the Armory was not built in five years, then it would revert back to the town of Plymouth. Since construction was completed within five years, condition placed on the conveyance in the deed was satisfied, and there is no longer requirement that the property revert to the town of Plymouth. The recorded source deed may be found in the Grafton County Registry of Deeds at Book 864, page 73. As we finalize our plans for a facility on Mahew Turnpike, we will sure to notify you as for a project. Okay, where was the actual statement then that was kind of a kicker that? Uh, where's the? Oh. No. As of today, we have not made any firm plans to divest the Armory as our stationing plan for National Guard units matures, we will inform you of any potential divestiture of the Armory. Okay.
You talked about the five years, Bill. I think that's the issue.
No, yeah, he just states it's a five-year deal, but the, the language is-
We met our obligation, so we don't owe you anything, basically.
Says, with regard to the Agency Real Property Reports you attached, we note that the language in the report is not consistent with the language on the property deed. We are correcting the report. So, you know, they're essentially wiping out the history of the language that is actually in the statement in the state's report to us on the Agency Real Property Report. So.
They do that.
Pretty easily. I guess he did it pretty easily, but.
Really?
And it's a rather significant property for us. And we don't want to go into the state mix or wherever, you know, it's anticipated that it would go, you know, once they move out. Especially since the language in the report from the state was that it reverts back to the town of Plymouth. So. So we're requesting, actually, I think we probably need a motion to request from the, our attorney, well, we briefly, you know, met with our attorney. He, he wrote a letter, met by phone. He wrote a letter requesting a 91A, you know, history of where that language occurred, or any mention of, of that, that language. And we're need, have you signed that, or what?
No, you wanted to bring it to the board.
Alright, so therefore, we need to have the board weigh in on that to make sure that we allow our attorney to file a 91A request with the state to request any language regarding deed restrictions and any kind of language that may be outside of the deed as well.
It would actually be us that's filing the 91A request.
Okay. Where is the law?
So those aren't something we would have, those aren't, we don't have any documents that pertain to this?
We have a lot of documents, but what the original deed says is exactly what he said, that way back when, in 1955, the town voted to put away money into a capital reserve account to buy, to purchase a piece of land that they could build an armory on. So the town bought the land and then turned it over to the Armory. And in the deed, it says the Armory has five years, they have, National Guard has five years to build on that land, and if they don't, it comes back to us. So they did build within the five years, but these recent, these reports that we're finding from the state say that when it ceases to be used as an armory, it comes back to us. So it's still saying that we get it, you know, but he's disputing that. He's based, he's going on what the deed said in 1955. So I'm wondering if there's something else out there, or why the state would have put in their, in their records that it was going to revert to us once they don't use it anymore as an armory.
And it's a fairly common practice for state-owned property to revert back to the town, too. So, I mean, it's not really exceptional that, of what we're requesting, especially when the language has been carried forward for years, so. But.
Do we have any, do we have any planning board records?
No, there wouldn't.
No.
There wouldn't be planning board records.
I mean, we theoretically, we could have some documentation that would be kicking around that we have discovered yet, or?
I have a question. Do you know who the grantor was back in 1955? The grantor to the town of Plymouth?
Yeah, Fred. He was actually a selectman at that time.
Toby?
Yes. Yes.
Wasn't he a state senator?
I don't know. He was a selectman at the time because he signed off on the property transferring, which would, I would think would be a conflict of interest.
Whatever. We're not just getting that.
But that was, that was years ago, so.
There, there could have been some discussion at the state level that is in records, such as legislative intent.
Oh, we saw.
Which was guiding this.
So.
That should be investigated.
Yep. Um, well, that is somewhat covered, or it is covered, in the letter that Attorney Radigan drafted for us. If I could read you that. You don't have a copy of that either. I take it, but.
And we have that.
Oh, you have that? Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, so the town of Plymouth requests to inspect and copy all governmental, governmental records that relate to or reference in any way, any sort of condition, restriction or understanding, whether, you know, so, I mean, it's beyond Michaelades', it's, it's the state, so. You know, theoretically, that would be discovered. You know, the, any kind of discussion or legislative intent or grants of the property outside of the, you know, the deed. So, I mean, I mean, nothing would stop us from doing our own research as well. But, and we've got time, you know, it's not, it's not like we have to do this like really quickly. But this would be a good, you know, step to at least involve Michaelades' in doing a discovery himself. So since you had a chance to review the letter, are there any comments on that specifically, or? And if not, if you want us to go ahead, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. To have Kathy sign this letter on behalf of the town of Plymouth, Michaelades'. Put words in your mouth, but, alright.
But this was for, to allow the town attorney to pursue the RSA 91A request. No, it's us. Okay, so not the town. He wrote the letter on our behalf, but it, he said it should come from us. But he would pursue it if we don't get what we're looking for.
Okay. So Neil, Neil moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ted seconded. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Zach, your vote? Mary Ann?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Since I don't have to do an item on Sununu's decision not to vaccinate college students, because we now have that not in effect, but targeted, what, for April 19th?
Yep.
So I must have done a really good job.
Yep.
I don't have to do it anymore, so.
Will they have time to get their second shot?
Doesn't really matter. Yeah, but hopefully that, you know, hopefully they will, but they're.
Aren't they trying to get Johnson and Johnson?
If, yeah, unfortunately, you know, like J&amp;J's got the recall, you know, what, I mean, it seems like there's, you know, a couple of different vaccines are somewhat problematic. Actually, Scott Weeden can weigh in as well. But if they have J&amp;J, I'm thinking that's, that'd be great. If they don't, that's still fine. You know, they're going to be, you know, mostly immunized.
Making it their second one at home anyhow.
Yeah, either that, or, yeah, whether you can get it, get it, yeah, exactly, get it when they go home. If home is not Plymouth, or.
What's going on on April 19th? That's when they're allowed to start getting their shots.
Yeah, and it's, and actually, Scott, you can weigh in if you want, but it's like 16 and older at that point, right?
That is correct. So everything is open for 16 and over right now on April 19th. It opens for the out-of-state college students, as you mentioned, Bill. I know in a call last week, they're trying to do closed pods and do the J&amp;J so that it's one and done, and they move them forward, and when they go back out of state, they'll be fully immunized as well. So there's hopefully that, more J&amp;J coming into the state over the next two weeks, of which will hopefully be used for those closed pods in the universities.
So who'll be doing the administration and then the effect on Steve's group as far as long lines?
For the closed pods?
Yeah. Who's going to be administering the shots for the students?
Well, what they're trying to do right now is through the Angel with the New Hampshire Public Health Network in our area is to organize that through Angel and get those set up. And she has a list of vaccinators that she uses, as they did in SAU 48 on March 10th and April 10th.
Gotcha.
So it's likely it will be on, on campus, for, at least for the students at PSU, or?
That's what they're pushing for, Bill.
Okay. Alright, and, well. Oh, actually, so, we didn't do anything on budget sharing, or what was the deal on budget share, shared revenue? Where do we stand?
Yeah, you, you wrote that in your email when we were going to talk about his decision not to vaccinate college students.
Alright, well, that, that budget's still creeping down, so I don't know what the resolution's going to be, so let's bypass that, okay? And maybe we can just stick with Scott, because, you know, Mary Ann, you brought up that issue about like really long lines at, at least the Armory. I, thankfully, I never experienced that. I, well, the two shots that I had, I was pretty damn lucky, I guess, but.
I'll let you know tomorrow.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So you know, I just wrote an email last week to the National Guard, Homeland Security, and I did CC Scott on that email. Last Wednesday was literally out of control. They can comfortably do about 400 vaccinations a day, and they, last Wednesday, did 1,080. And the traffic was wrapped all the way around the Armory, Armory Road, through two parking lots of PSU, down Armory Road, down Toby Road, down Weeks Road, down Merrill Street, down Main Street, all the way back to Kirk's Auto, and then all the way to the traffic circle the other side. So we had to, literally, I had to take all my people who were on duty and, and have them come out and help with traffic, and I had to add additional resources to that detail to, just to accommodate the heavy flow of traffic, and it's just not, that site is way too small for that kind of volume.
Steve, who controls kind of how many people can come through in a day?
I honestly don't have the answer to that question. I, I don't know, and I don't know that they have the answer to that question. You know, I mean, depends on who you ask, you get different answers about things. It's a little frustrating, to be honest with you. You know, and, and, you know, some people, like, they're overbooking, other people, like, people didn't have appointments, but they had an appointment written on the back of their card, and unbeknownst to them, they were supposed to schedule an appointment online, but they didn't do that, so they were still honoring it with the, there was so many things. I'm like, okay, I, I can't deal with that. I just need to deal with the traffic before we have another accident, because a few weeks prior to that, we did have accidents, because it was backed up almost all the way to the interstate.
So speaking of, of the fact, yeah, so my card, it only had someone, you know, the, the National Guard guy just wrote it in the back. The date and the time. And then I tried to verify that. And there's, you know, back in the day, it was before Vinny, and it was after VAMs. So there was no place to check.
Yeah. And, you know, the frustrating part is, you know, and I'm not, I'm not poo-pooing anything by any means, but I'm just, just tell from what I've heard working at those details, the VAMs was very easy for like the National Guardspeople to check people in, but very hard for the average person to get an appointment. And then fast forward to Vinny, and it's very easy for the average person to schedule an appointment, very hard, it's harder for the National Guardspeople to check people in with that system.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, I, I don't know, it's just, I mean, they're doing the best they can, and I, to be honest with you, I feel really bad for half of them. They are working really hard, and they worked really hard to, you know, keep the traffic flowing that day, too.
Yeah, I gotta say, I got mine, too, at five. I expect, I was expecting two hours. We were probably in line maybe 20 minutes. It was impressive, actually. I was impressed we got through so quickly.
I gotta say that Scott, Kathy gave me my shot. And he stuck it right in the bone. He had to put his foot up on my arm to pull it out.
Oh my gosh.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But it was pretty interesting that he gave me the shot, so.
My second shot, boy.
What's that?
My second shot, it really hit me hard.
Yeah?
Took a couple of weeks.
I lucked out, I guess, but anyway.
I do, too.
Are you getting, which one?
Moderna.
Okay, well. Good luck.
I know a girl in Vermont that had it, and she had a high fever for like three days. She wasn't feeling good. I'm like, great.
We have a vaccine call on Wednesday at noon time, so we can check further into that, Steve, to see if they've come up with any type of solution for the Plymouth Armory.
You, you can ask. I know what the answer's going to be, but please feel free to ask. You know, they even reached back out to me and said, hey, you know, is there a spot in Plymouth? And like, hey, no, there's not. We've already explored this, guys. You know, we, we, I went, I went around the town with a couple of majors, and we picked a few spots, but they're just not good enough. You know, and, and the, you know, the Plymouth Armory is what we have, but the, the problem with that is, like I said, about 400 vaccinations tops. That's a, that's a comfortable day for them without impeding any of the Plymouth traffic.
I know on the call last Wednesday, they talked that hopefully the fixed sites would be going away after the next few weeks, and they would open up Hannaford's, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS would start administering the COVID-19 vaccine, but a specific date, that hasn't been given yet.
Well. So Scott, anything? Well, actually, you're going to be speaking about the COVID-19 illness policy and the mandatory daily screening certification form. Any, any other discussion on, on that, or we're pretty much? Alright, Scott, you want to do the policy changes?
Sure. So the policy was updated based on our conversation we had on March 22nd at the work session. The current policy that was updated on March 26th, I think, that you have in front of you tonight does follow Emergency Order Number 88, which talks about the universal guidelines for travel. It also includes the DHHS updates from March 16th. And that's specific to Section 5 on the COVID illness policy. So those are the updates we talked about that night, and then with regards to the screening form, it was updated as needed with regards to the policy.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or discussion on that, or? Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
And, you know, regarding contacting state reps, and this is in reference to a couple of correspondences that were you know, written to, you know, inform reps about support or not of certain bills. And I don't know if anyone's had a chance to provide testimony, or at least, you know, the, your support or, or lack of support for specific bills, but you're kind of tempted to put in, I mean, it's very easy now to go into the legislature and just go ahead and say yea or nay on, you know, whether you support a bill or not. It's very simple and easy just to put you, your name in as like Bill Bolton, Select Board Chair. Well, yeah, you, you might, might be, but you don't make comments on behalf of the town specifically to, you know, legislative pieces, or contact your legislators and act on behalf of the town. You're a private citizen at that point. Unless the board takes a stand on a specific piece of legislation that would like to, you know, have someone reach out to like a public hearing and indicate that the Plymouth Select Board is against or for this, this piece of legislation. So, you know, it's just something to keep in mind, because it is very easy now to to go into, you know, general court and just sign on to a bill and say you support or you don't. Just remember that you're just doing that as a private citizen to include our town manager. Unless the board suggests that she, she goes out and supports or, or doesn't support bills. And we have a lot of agencies and different support groups that act on our behalf, like the New Hampshire Municipal Association, or, you know, different associations are already doing that. They're lobbying. So just a reminder that, you know, you, you do not act on behalf of the town. You're just a citizen. Not just a citizen, but you're a citizen. Any questions? Okay. Anything else that someone would like to bring up, or?
So I did get approached by a couple, I don't know if you just have free time to fill or not.
Go for it.
So, one of the things was the trees on the town common. I know we don't have an official town tree kind of person, but who normally has been taking care of that? And can we, Kathy, you've been taking care of that?
No, I'm the tree warden as town manager.
Oh, talk to me.
I didn't know that. I didn't know, well, Paul, Paul, when he was town administrator, found a paper that said the town administrator was the tree warden. It's like, oh, good, thanks. But, so what about the trees on the common?
So they had concern. Say that again.
Are they misbehaving, or did they need the warden to?
No, they felt they weren't being pruned well enough. Yeah, they were just wondering who takes care of the trees.
Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, yeah.
Okay.
So, well, Doug McLean has a personal interest in some of those trees. So it might, might be a Doug, a Doug, you know, issue as well.
He said he would show Parks and Rec how to prune them properly.
Okay. Did you catch that?
I did. Do I initiate that conversation with Doug McLean, or? What do we do? How do I do?
We'll talk to Larry first. Yeah. He's responsible for the park, so we'll talk to him and let him know that Doug McLean has an interest in it.
Okay.
And then they can get together.
Okay, great, thank you. Doug donated some of those trees.
He did.
Yep, well, not the American elm, what was the?
Chestnut.
What?
Chestnut, no, no chestnuts.
No, the elms there, they're, they're resistant to the elm disease. Patriot, whatever they are, they're elms. And the chestnuts are not going to go on the town common, because they have an issue with dropping spiky seed pods that kids step on playing around.
They leave their Legos around, so. What the heck?
And then the other concern is seeding on the common. There aren't, there aren't many places for them to, I mean, you know, so I don't know, we have one bench and one picnic table, I think.
You could ask your, your your fellow business people on Main Street if they want to put a table on the common and have their name, like, put on it that they donated it or whatever, you know. Call it an Eminem Scoop's picnic table.
Let me see if I can wrestle something up.
And probably include Larry again, too.
Yeah, okay. Since the common's his, so.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, it's somewhere. Common's getting more use now.
I noticed there's like straw out there, so they must have seeded or something.
Yeah.
And no longer applying chemicals, so.
Right.
Looks okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Any, anyone else? Any, uh, anyone else says something, uh? Well, I, uh, I'll kick off a discussion, um.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
The airplane that's upside down at the airport.
Yeah, what, what's going on there anyway?
Well, um, I've, I talked with my son Colin and he, he really wants to get rid of it, but he's afraid to touch it because the owner doesn't communicate and he doesn't want liability. And I guess he's talked with the Aeronautics Commission about it, but I don't know where it's going, but it's still there.
Did it blow over in the highway?
Yeah, we had a forty-one mile per hour gust and it, uh, broke the, uh, uh, tie downs which had been neglected.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Colin said it's been there for how many years? Twenty?
Yeah, the, the guy, I don't know much about the guy. I, Colin said he lives up in the woods and he's off, offline and everything and he's difficult to communicate with. He lives over in Groton.
It's been there twenty years?
Not upside down.
No, not upside down.
Oh, all right.
It, it's not airworthy.
Yeah.
Well, especially now.
It's really badly damaged now.
Wouldn't that be like abandoned property or something?
I don't know. You have, I guess you need to ask Colin, you know, where it stands. I know he'd really like to get it out of there.
I think what we should do is, um, have a good discussion with Colin, see what's going on. And then see if we can maybe have the Groton Police Department, see if they can reach out to this gentleman if we can.
Colin was going to send him a letter and tell him that he wanted to do something with the plane, but he didn't wanna touch it with the, this guy signing a waiver. So I haven't heard anything from Colin since then.
Okay.
Neil, is it leaking?
I don't think so.
Well, there must have been some fluid.
It's just a distraction.
If it's been sitting for twenty years and not probably empty.
And, and it could blow again, you know, it's not tied down. You know, another big gust of wind comes along, could be out in the road.
Well, as long as it blows it over the bank, I guess we'll be all set, so.
Yeah, over to my place.
All right, Anne's, Anne's gonna take care of it. Anything else? So I did have a discussion, um, with one of the board members regarding, um, I guess the the concern about, uh, presentation that was made to defend a budget item. Um, and the fact that, you know, there could have been a better discussion prior to the presentation to, you know, have that person ace it. Um, so I, and that brought up the fact that, um, not everyone is either expected to, um, do things in a similar manner to guarantee success. So, you know, there, there was a, a, a discussion about whether or not we might be able to do um, something like an annual, um, you know, review of, uh, employees per, you know, performance, um, you know, over the past year. I know we brought this up a couple of times and it was really kind of like, uh, like negated, um, a few years ago and, um, the previous town administrator had a real issue with it as well. Um, but, um, it, it could, actually, it would be very beneficial to have this, um, opportunity to let people know, um, their expectations and, and how best to meet that over the next year. Um, so I, I just putting it out there whether or not people might think that that's a benefit that we might wanna work towards to, at least to the supervisors of, um, you know, our, our different units to make sure that, you know, that's passed along, you know, during at least a singular annual review. Uh, what, what do people think?
I personally think that having a annual review for especially supervisors or managers of departments in this case now is a good thing because it can provide goals and constructive feedback that is documented and allows them to improve. My concern about not having it right now is that they are operating under the assumption that they're doing okay until someone tells them differently. If they're not getting that regular feedback in goal setting, then there's really nothing to measure them against.
In, in that I would, I would even go to biannual, uh, a yearly, um, seems like a long time to let somebody, I'm, I'm assuming people are having conversations along the way. Um, you know, more, whether it's weekly or monthly, um, you know, how are you doing with these various goals? It's important, like Ted said, you know, um, give them feedback. Um, but in, those aren't so formal. So I'd love to see it be biannual and, uh, much more formal, you know, written down and things like that. You know, how are you doing in the first six months of your goal setting?
Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Steve.
Being one of the supervisors, department heads, none of you guys know what I do on a day-to-day basis, so I really don't think that's fair for you to evaluate me on a, on a daily basis like that. Um, you know, we at the PD, we do, uh, you know, biannual, um, evaluations on everybody. And to be fair to everybody, I actually have the deputy chief do mine because he does know what I do on a daily basis. And everybody that, you know, um, anybody on the board is available to, uh, look at any of those evaluations anytime they want. They're in everybody's personnel files. Uh, I can't, I can only speak for the police department. I'm not speaking for, uh, any of the other departments, but that's what we do at the police department. Um, and if you wanted to evaluate me maybe on a limited scope like, um, I don't know, uh, like public hearings or, you know, dealing with you guys, uh, preparing budgets, uh, those kinda things, I would greatly, uh, or encourage that, that type of feedback from you guys, but like I said, on a day-to-day basis.
Cause that's gonna be a gap for you, right? Cause he's not gonna be able to evaluate you on, on those components.
Correct, yeah, absolutely cannot. So I mean, if you guys wanna do that, that would absolutely be fair and I would, I would love that feedback, to be honest with you.
Well, this would fall to Kathy, right?
Or Kathy, whatever. Cause like Steve and, uh, the police chief, they don't, do they report to Kathy or do they report to us officially?
According to the good book, they report to Kathy. At least that's my understanding.
Well, I always, I mean, I report to Kathy anyway because, um, you know, no offense to you guys, but you're available only on a, every other week. So I, I have to report to her, you know, in order to, uh, get things done.
We make policy. And she's the administration.
Yeah.
Now, I, I think it, we should do this. I can think of other departments where it, you know, we really need to get up to speed.
Thanks, Neil. Um, Scott, you have your hand up?
Uh, I was just going to, at, at Health Trust, and I know it's not exactly the same, but we do have an annual evaluation process and supervisors and managers have to have quarterly check-ins with each one of their staff. And they build the documentation, good, bad, or indifferent and make sure that they are following their goal-setting process. So it's done quarterly, there's an annual review and before the annual view kicks off, there's a self-evaluation that the employee fills out or the supervisor fills out. In my case, I would fill one out, it gets sent to Wendy Parker, she reviews my self-evaluation. She reviews the quarterly notes that have been taken from our check-ins as well as my goal process on the goals and objectives that were set during the evaluation process. It seems to work very well and it gives a measurement tool of how you can evaluate that employee quarterly, biannually, annually through the self-evaluation and the goal-setting process. Just my two cents.
That is what we do at the police department. There is a self-evaluation form as well, same thing. That's exactly how we handle it there.
And that's, that's essentially the same process by which we use at the university system as well. So, I mean, we'd be adopting a model that's well-established, gives the supervisory plenty of opportunity to provide input and the opportunity for the supervisor to, to go through that input with the, with the employee to make sure that everybody's on the same page. This avoids long-term, um, supervisory problems that would escalate into something that is really difficult for the town to excavate itself from. You know, in terms of, no one ever told me that I wasn't doing well, what the heck are you telling me that I'm suddenly not satisfactory? You know, this, this allows that to happen on a regular basis and it's documented. So if there's a, an ongoing performance problem, you don't wait till it's a problem for it to be addressed. You can talk about it ahead of time.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, um, there's a lot of support for that, or, and, um, maybe by our next board meeting, we can have, um, like a draft process and maybe, um, you know, at least, um, discuss what might appear on a form, if there's gonna be a standardized form or, you know, what questions might we, we ask and whether or not it's gonna be like a quarterly or biennial, you know, kind of a review or periodic check-in that's, you know, required and documented.
Bill, would it be helpful if I sent you our forms, the self-evaluation forms and the actual evaluator score sheet as well?
That would be good. I was also gonna throw, uh, Scott under the bus too and see if he could, um, you know, throw in his process as well, um. And between the two of them, I think we could probably nail it, I would think.
Okay.
You know that highway.
I will get the
Okay.
From Health Trust and pass them along.
Okay, thanks. And Anne just, I don't know if you caught that, but, um, Highway does their evaluations as well.
Annual, yep.
Annual, okay. So let's, uh, try to at least standardize it and agree on a, a process for the, all the supervisors, so. All right. Very good.
I have a question, uh, it, what's the procedure if, if a select board person wants to do a tour of one of the departments?
Just, well, actually that was like very much encouraged when I, well, I became a select board member. Um, just go ahead and call them up, you know, they're open anytime, just make, make a date and time and, and go visit, um, every department, you know, that's a great idea. And, oh, you know, Steve opens, opens it up, you take a, a tour of the whole place and.
I have done a tour with the police department.
What's that?
I, I'd love to do one. I've been real hesitant because of COVID for the past year, but
Yeah.
It was like maybe we're, maybe we're coming out of that and the departments would be comfortable. I, I don't know, Steve, you're the.
Well, we're all vaccinated at the PD, so, you know, if you come on in, we're mad.
Pressure off.
Right, so if you want to, absolutely. I mean, you know, we, we're just, you know, especially if you're coming in, you know, one or two of you at a time and absolutely, you know, we can accommodate that. Um, you know, if you came in, uh, you know, as a group, it might be a little bit tighter, you know, we could be more difficult to socially distant, but one or two at a time, absolutely can accommodate that, no problem. And I encourage it. You should, you should need to know, you need to know what all the buildings look like.
Yep.
And it gives you an, uh, an actual, uh, opportunity to meet some of the employees you don't ever get to see either.
Yeah. See him at the barbecue, that's pretty much it.
Yep.
I've seen the dungeon. I wouldn't wanna be there.
I know that Steve was really good about giving, uh, members of the advisory budget committee a tour.
Anytime, just say when.
All right. That goes for all departments too, highways. Fire. All right. Well, we've got nine minutes to kill. I think that's, um, he's on the agenda, I believe, I think that's. Pardon me? Yeah, I think so. Um, it's up to him.
So I, I have a question. Um, I, I wrote that letter in the Laconia Daily Sun and I sent one to the, uh, Record Enterprise and, uh, to inform people about the election coming up. And I signed it, my name, select board member, is, is that okay?
Uh, yeah, cause what, you, you're just informing people about a process that, you know, we, we as a board agreed to, which is, you know, hold that vote. You know, we're just, uh, encouraging people to, to show up to, uh, a board process, you know? So, yep. Um, if you were to, you know, say you support Article Two, um, then that might be, uh, you know, kind of like electioneering, but.
Is it? Because it doesn't, it, doesn't it say in the warrant that, uh, that the select board endorses this article?
Okay, you might, I don't know if it's splitting hairs or not, but.
I mean, I would agree with you maybe on a, like a state legislature article, but.
Are there any warrant articles that we don't support?
The recommendation by the town attorney was not to have um, individuals sign their names to something that they put in the paper as a position being held from the town. So you as a selectman, Neil, if you wanted to put that in there and not sign selectmen as we recommend, you know, I recommend you pass Article Two.
As a resident.
As a resident, you can do that. But as a selectman, you should not be doing that. It's called electioneering if you do it as a group or if you do it as an individual with a title. That makes sense, Zach?
Well, yeah, it's good to have it clarified.
It would, it would make sense to me if we didn't explicitly have a statement on warrant articles that said that he, the select board endorsed them. I mean, we've already had a public position that says we do.
Great.
Yeah, so there's a perception though, you know, unless you have a very, very, um, you know, a, a really strong feeling that you had to do that. Um, you could probably do it legally, but there's a perception thing where, you know, someone's gonna take offense about this board member came out in favor of this and, um, you know, so it's, it's, it's a judgment call and you'd probably win. I mean, there's nothing to be won. It's just, um, just a perception thing, I guess.
Well, you, you know, uh, my intention is to be upfront, above board, uh, you know, open with people.
Right.
And what if you didn't actually personally agree with the warrant article? You voted a nay or you didn't vote for it?
Well, if you were not doing the statement of that, that was the board supported, um, if you were negating that or saying no to, you know, vote no, even though the board supports and that's.
Right.
That would, that would feel pretty cut and dry as electioneering.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I look at both. I mean, why risk it?
Well, it's good to get it out in the open and, and clarify the issue.
And it's good to remind people to vote, Neil.
Um, on a related note, uh, on the topic of writing to our, our state representatives, uh, that certainly as presented in the, in the agenda item was talking about board members, is that true for town employees as well?
What was that again?
In terms of, of, uh, writing to our, our representatives, so.
Oh, yeah, um.
Does that apply to town employees as well?
Yeah.
So for instance.
Theoretically, we're the executive committee of, you know, the town and therefore a message from the town to a legislator should be coming through our approval as a board. So, yeah, a, a town member can't show support one way or the other to a particular bill um, as, and state that they are, um, I'm this, this, you know, I am this person working at the town hall and I support this bill. You, you shouldn't do that. You can't do that. That's, you know, so it's, um, unless it's like a, um, an approval of the, of the select ward, then fine, we can show support in some manner or another, either by, you know, we can state that one person shall, you know, go to a legislator and say you support this bill. And we could do that with Kathy as well or the board, um, as a board or a single person on the board, but going out on your own, uh, outside of discussion at a board, you know, you can't do that. I'm probably overstating that, but, um.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that certainly has occurred, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, that feels funny with a town employee. Yeah, that feels funny with a town employee not allowing them. Because I think a lot of times they're going to say, you know, a, as a, as a town employee, I've seen X, Y, and Z firsthand, you know, or in my experience, as opposed to the executive board.
It can be interpreted that they're speaking for the town in that, uh, in that message. They're actually only speaking for themselves.
Well, I can tell you that I just recently did it myself and I was speaking on behalf of law enforcement. But clearly at the bottom of my email address is my signature and who I work for. Um, you know, but I was also weighing in on my perspective as a law enforcement officer more than anything else, more than just a town employee.
Yeah. So what happens in that particular case?
I think it's a slippery slope.
Yeah.